I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could you please rise and join us as we honor our nation with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we approve the agenda, we do have a need to amend the agenda. We will not be having a student representative report tonight due to the cancellation of school. We also have pulled out the appointment of Lisa Moreno as a special education teacher. That's under board business. And then we have the Delphi service agreement under the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to make those changes to the agenda? Pam, a second.
Here.
Dennis, I'm sorry. I just see it.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor of those changes? Thank you. Now can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Dennis and Matt, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Do we have any public comment at this time? The board welcomes public comment. We would invite you to come up to the table if anyone wishes to speak to the board. Board member comments? Do we have any board member comments at this point? Matt?
Yeah, I had the pleasure of being all section or the wrestling section was all weekend long and happy to report that Wayne took first place in triple B class five tournament. And we had 10 wrestlers in the finals with Joey Solowski and Jack Freshluck taking first place, Matt Akamis, Jesse Jones taking second, Nick Yanklaski, Connor Lawson taking third, Jack LaStrange taking fourth, Nick Lucio, Max Morales taking fifth, and Adrian Colvin taking sixth. Outstanding wrestler, we got one of those. That was Joey Solowski and Coach of the Year Scott Freshluck.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I believe the girls are at least sharing the league title in girls basketball. And also, I'd like to point out in our consent agenda, the board handbook, I'd like to thank Karen Moore. She did the draft for that. She was on board before and that we're finally approving it after working on it and it'll give us some guidelines and for new board members coming on and for us to do a better job of what we're doing, make sure we're doing things the way we should. So I'd like to thank Karen for starting that.
Do we have any other board member comments? Carl?
I also, believe it or not, went to wrestling. Every time I go, learn a little more, but it was very exciting and I just want to applaud our wrestlers. I thought they did a really nice job and also our boosters with what was available to the coaches in the coaches room and concessions and our Wayne cafeteria staff for allowing and being a part of the concessions. It really looked like it was well run and I think I might even go to super sectionals this weekend to learn a little more. And I also had the privilege of going to Free Will's book fair and family fun night the other night and there weren't a ton of people there when I was there. I went early, but the kids that were there seemed to be having a great time. There was a wonderful lady in the book sale and it just looked like a great place and the building looked wonderful. So it was just nice to see the kids having fun just for fun.
Do we have any other board member comments? Dennis?
I'd like to congratulate the ski team too. Ben Schultz, I think his name is, made it to states. So they'll be going to states. I think it's the first time in Wayne's history too, student going to state. So congratulations.
First time in a long time back in the, I have to correct you, back in the eighty, probably eighty-eight or ninety, we had two students go to the state skiing tournament, but I don't think we've had anybody since then. So to get there is quite an honor. I mean, you have to be an exceptional, exceptional skier to qualify to go to the state tournament. So good. Any other board member comments? Not the superintendent's report.
All right, great. So yes, in addition to the great job that was done at wrestling, we have a couple other highlights we'd like to add tonight and just really great things that we have happening across the district. Just, we want to congratulate some of our kids for their participation in the district level spelling bee. We had Rachel Denny, Lily Flora, Charlie Wiggins, Mimi, I hope I say this right, Ugaldi, Kayla Dunstan, Parker Wiggins, Yasima Demato, or Dimato, I hope, I hope I'm saying this right, Cooper Jackson, Vicky Zou, rather, and Owen Doran. Charlie Wiggins, by the way, plays first and Owen plays second. They will be competing in the regional spelling bee that will be taking place in March. Also want to congratulate Adriana Van Kuik who recently signed her letter of intent to attend the University of Buffalo on an athletic scholarship to play soccer. And then also, we had just a couple more kids, Abby Dewitt, Jordan Cohen, Brian Gerhardt, and Brooke Hastings. They have actually already traveled. They're in Boston right now and they're singing in the eastern division on our course and doing really a great job. They tweeted us today saying, you know, I know you guys had a snow day, but we're really working hard basically. So really, really good kids. Also want to, just in terms of a highlight, want to make sure that the board knows that one of the things that we endeavor to do in our office is make sure that we continue to keep having conversations with the community and sharing what we're doing. And one of the things we recently have begun is conversations with the superintendent. This is a social media way to connect with community. And so we're using our YouTube channel to really put out video about different topics and talk with people from our community. We started with our students who are really, we have some of the most brightest students, I think, in the whole wide world. And we had two juniors, I think it was, that interviewed Greg and I around the budget. And we thought, boy, this is good. We will use this as our first conversation with the superintendent. And if you go to our YouTube page, it is also on our website, if you just click on it, you will see the video, which is about a good 20-minute video, and the kids asked some really great questions about the budget process. And it's just a nice way to connect with that sector of our community. So we'll be doing those kinds of conversations and on different topics and the goal is just to connect and just keep everybody in the loop as to what we're doing basically. So I think you'll love it. Just click on it and I think you'll have fun.
Does that play in the school at any time?
It can be played in the school.
No, I mean, does it, like on a monitor or something like in the cafeteria?
It's not yet, but that might be something we might be able to do. We have monitors all around, so it's easy to do that. So we'll see.
Yeah, we do.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, so those are just some highlights. And tonight, we want to kind of get into some of our report pieces. As you all know, we have a comprehensive study that we're now doing. And the first part of that study is with this really great person here, Dr. Rick Timms. Dr. Timms really needs no introduction. His work speaks for itself. He's known throughout the state as a fiscal expert, former district superintendent, school superintendent in Spencerport. He just has a wealth of knowledge with regard to fiscal planning and we are, I'm really pleased to be working with him. And he's already started working with Greg, gathering data, and just wants to share a little bit about the work he's going to be doing. And board, I've shared with you already that some of the things that Dr. Timms will be doing is helping us by looking at our current rate of spending, where would we be a couple years out? What if things happened with Ghanai? What if things happened with the sales tax, you know? And then also helping us to think about options that maybe we had not considered before. And our goal is to eventually have a fiscal strategic kind of plan that will help us guide the work that we do in the future. So he is really a great resource and I'd like to introduce him to you all tonight. And we're going to have him kind of come on up to the table and he's going to share with you all a little bit for tonight. Okay?
Thank you for the invitation to be here. It's my pleasure. Got a short presentation. Do I just hit the down arrow button on the laptop? I've been doing school finance for like a long time and I think I've had most of it pretty much memorized at this point, so I think I'm going to do a pretty good job for you. I think, I think your superintendent is absolutely correct. The smartest districts really do long-range planning. It's nice to come up with an annual budget, but it just gets you for a few months. And I think, I think it's really wise to take a look long-term as best you can into what the future holds for it. So what I'm going to do is kind of take you through a couple steps. I call it strategic planning for long-range planning. Now, here's what happens. If you, if you keep doing what you've always done, people think you always get what you always get. Well, actually, in finance, you get less because you can, you can mess up a lot of things in a school district, but you can't mess up the money. I mean, it makes the district run. It literally runs on the money, whether it's tax money, state aid, or whatever. So as you can see, now you're looking at one of them back and you go, oh yeah, that's perfect. Well, this is really cool.
Actually, I'd like to get a little closer.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, I'll highlight it for you. The idea is over time, what happens is, is that we're always trying to measure our performance in some way, whether it's the quality of our performance, the efficiency of it, the effectiveness of it, or the economy of scale of it. The economy of scale is really getting the best bang for the buck type of thing. So what happens is people really start losing momentum. They get to a certain point, they start doing better, things look like they're really gelling, and then they start what they call automatic pilot. And they just kind of keep it going. But what they don't realize is they're usually slipping behind because there are other factors at play that start, you know, peeling away at their resources one way or another. A couple that you have that are staring you right in the face, obviously, is the Ghanai nuclear power plant and you also have the sales tax piece. But a piece that a lot of people don't look at is state aid and it's been problematic for a number of years. So what happens is we try, we start losing this momentum and actually we start moving backward in finance. We start finding out that we're just really not as healthy as we thought we were. So what we're suggesting is we take this strategic action by actually examining where your finances are going, where you're spending your money, how you're spending your money, and see if there's ways that you can become more efficient, more effective, or manage economies of scale. And also, see if there's strategic ways we can take a look at some of the problems that you may face with regard to the power plant closing, loss of sales tax, changes in state aid, and so on. A whole myriad of things that affect capital projects also, or excuse me, affect your budget like capital projects, the purchases of buses, and you want to try and make sure that you're planning those out long-term as well. The way I look at it is we're right now in the 15, 16 school year and we're going to start planning out year after year. And I'm going to try and come up with a spreadsheet for you that you could look at and say, if we keep doing these types of things and we make the changes, Rick, that you're talking about, then this is where we may end up in terms of what our fund balance looks like, what our taxes may look like, where our spending patterns are. So what we're really going to do is we're going to try and figure out exactly where you are and see if we can plot for you a desired future. Where do you want to be? Now, I'm having the arrow go up in hopes that we're going to be in a better place, but the point is, is that you, you face some really tough financial situations, I think, going forward, especially with the power plant and especially if the sales tax disappears for you. So it will not be the same old, same old, but the thing is, how can we make the best of kind of a tough situation? Now, the idea though, is not to start looking at things year by year, but to look long-term. In other words, where will we be? Are we going to start eating up our reserves quicker than we thought? Is, what about our spending patterns? Are they going up at such a rate that we won't be able to sustain the effort? What do we want to do with maintaining taxes at a reasonable level? What's the impact of the tax cap over time and things like this? And especially state aid, because I think one of the things most school districts should do that they don't do very well is lobby for more state aid. You've got to remember that the bulk of your money for your school district is supposed to come from the state and it should come from the state. And they actually have a constitutional obligation to pay you. And, but they're not. And so what they're doing is they're withholding a significant amount of funds from you. And this is going to hurt unless they start paying up pretty quickly. So what we're going to do is come up with a work plan. So we're going to take a look at some 16, 17 budgeting guidelines and strategies. So right now, I'm already working with Greg. I gave him a whole ton of homework and we keep conferring on the, by phone. I'm, as an ex-supervisor and district superintendent and assistant superintendent for business and curriculum, as a ex-principal, as an ex-teacher, department chairman, and coach of three sports, it's also up to me to make sure I watch your money. I have a fiduciary responsibility for you. So I will not make many trips here. We're going to try and do as much as we can via phone, if you understand what I'm getting at, to minimize your costs. Okay, so that's, that's a pledge I've made to your district. So what we've started doing is I gave Greg a ton of homework. We went over a whole bunch of plans for a couple hours. We've reviewed a whole bunch of data. I've asked for a ton of data and I've got a lot of it logged in my computer. But what we've got to do is try and figure out basically how the budget is developed and how those numbers come about and some strategies to either change those, alter those, but hopefully improve them. We're also going to look at your reserves and fund balances. Now, reserves and fund balances are not exactly the same thing. Reserves are monies that are supposed to be set aside for known liabilities, something you know you're going to owe in the future. A fund balance is money set aside in case you need it for something you haven't calculated in the future. Now, we know that the controller's been running around hitting people in the head over those two topics, but the key thing is he's not running any school districts. And so what we've got to do is ensure long-term stability. The next thing, we're going to take a look at your debt service issues for capital projects and buses, and there's two reasons for those. Mainly because capital projects and buses do generate, believe it or not, state aid. In other words, part of your bus purchase is paid for by the state and we want to make sure we don't interfere with that cash flow. But capital projects are also partially paid for by the state and we want to take a look at your debt service schedule to find out if there's a better time than not to do a capital project. The thing about capital projects is they usually take two, maybe three, sometimes four years to get off the ground. So you've got, if you want something done within four years, you better start planning yesterday. Okay? And that's what we're going to start doing. We're going to take a look at the calculation of surpluses and revenues and expenditure. What I mean by that is, is that the best budgets do not, this is going to kill you when I tell you this and I hate to do this on tape, but here goes. The best budgets are not accurate in terms of revenues or expenditures. And if they are, we're going to have to start slapping people because that would be wrong. What we really want to do is we hopefully, at the end of a year, we have underestimated revenues and overestimated expenditures. Not by a huge amount, but by enough to make sure that we have adequate cash flow during the school year. And then if all of a sudden some expenditure comes up, leaking roofs, five extra special ed kids, or something happens, you have the money to pay for it. And at the same time, I don't know if you've read the paper lately, you read the DNC, I used to be in Spencerport, so I used to read my state aid in the DNC. You know, it never came out to be that number. Isn't that amazing? Because you know, when they release your state aid, it's your state aid estimate. It's really not your state aid. And in some cases, year to year, some of the numbers that go into that number really bear no resemblance to the real number. So we're going to take a look at that as well. So we're going to try and come up with a long-range financial plan and take a look at some related issues. Because what happens is, is once you start losing revenues, a huge revenue stream, it could be sales tax or we'll say a pilot on a nuclear power plant, you will be physically stressed beyond your wildest belief. So we have to think of something. Okay? Now, whether or not that means we tighten this or that and how fast and how long, I'll let you know, we got to work on it. And in fact, that's part of Greg's homework is to figure out a whole bunch of questions I've asked for. Now, the work plan, I always call it a SWOT analysis. So we look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of district practices. So what we're going to do is I, it's great to tell you after two hours on the phone with me, basically is, okay, I see you have this budget code. I see this number. Where'd that number come from? What's that number for? What's included in that number? What isn't included in that number? How good was that number? Matter of fact, I've asked for your financial records for the last four years to find out how good all the numbers have been. Okay, so what I'm trying to do is try and figure out what works, what doesn't work, and what seems to be a trend we should continue versus practices we should avoid. Locust control over effect of and communication with regard to potential sales tax. You see, even, let's just say for instance, it was announced that you would lose the sales tax revenue. You have to be ready, I think, at that point, should that ever occur, to say, okay, what you're going to do about it. And nobody's going to wait for you to figure it out then, so we better figure it out now. So I think what you ought to start doing is start thinking about plans and how you're going to react should that happen. Now, whether it's phased out or it happens automatically, quickly or slowly, we can, we can come up with that. But I think you want to have some contingent plans just in case. And part of it is the communication. So as your superintendent was just mentioning about the tapes and the communications and the things you're going to be putting on your YouTube channel, the key thing is communicating to the population and the people who basically really own the school district, which would be the taxpayers and residents of the district. We owe it to everyone, because we're spending everybody else's money, to communicate truthfully exactly what's going on to them so they know what's up and what our options are. Same thing with the power plant and how it affects your tax base. Then I've got long-range projections to secure the district's fiscal health. I'm not going to do an analysis of this year's budget and then next year's budget and years after. I'm going to try and go to 2021. The estimates get shakier the farther out you go. Some people want to do a 10-year plan, so when they try and hire me to do a 10-year plan, I tell them to go get somebody else. The most I'll do is five. I prefer three, but I'll do up to five to get you started. And technically speaking, you will then be able to own the plan. In other words, when I'm done, I'm not going to have proprietary privilege over your plan. Your plan will be in the shape of a spreadsheet and you could alter as you want for the rest of your life. So you will own the plan because that's important. Sustainability of the current budget practices. Now, during the great recession, many school districts, you know, lost staff. I mean, almost, just about every school district cut staff or program to some degree during the recession. Some of them, over a period of time, particularly in the last couple of years, have added staff back. The question is, can you sustain the effort depending upon what happens to your revenues? Whether or not you can sustain that effort? We're going to try and do a little stress test on your district. And then what we want to know is the recommendations with regard to budget development and budget operations. Whatever I basically come up with for your superintendent and your assistant superintendent for business here, I will be telling you, we're going to have in writing. You'll know, but I figured we should keep this going. We should change this, we should add this. You will be able to do as you wish, but those will be my suggestions. Reserves and fund balances, what we're going to do is look at them over time and their relationship to the budget. It appears so far that your reserves actually provide you with two things. One is a cushion against future liabilities, but unfortunately, one of the future liabilities you're using them as a cushion over is your budget. And we've got to think that over because that's not really what the reserves are supposed to be there for. They're supposed to support the budget, but they're not supposed to bail it out. Okay? Now, you understand what I'm getting at? In other words, if you had a reserve for workers' comp, you should be taking some of those reserves to help you pay for workers' comp, not to all of a sudden pay for workers' comp, unemployment insurance, medical insurance. You're not, you know what I'm getting at? So the idea is, we've got to kind of figure out exactly what we're doing here. Now, with regard to that, I'm going to also ask the district to work with their auditor, their external auditor with regard to those, those numbers. And the reason is, is because it's easy for me to tell you what to do, but you will need a clean audit by the time this is done from your auditor. Is everyone understanding what I'm getting at? And it's their imprimatur, their stamp that has to be on that for the state. So, and concerning, I know your auditor, so it'll be pretty easy to do. Capital reserve for capital construction. I'm going to take a look at the idea of a substantial capital reserve for capital construction, if it's warranted and if it's favorable to the district. Now, capital reserve for capital construction is a great thing to have. It is a gift that keeps on giving. Okay? The use of your money is really important, how you use it. Now, this is going to be kind of strange to you, but let me explain to you how capital construction capital reserve works. Let's just say for instance, you wanted to do a $10 million capital project. Now, in the olden days, not too long ago, maybe less than 10 years ago, if you did a capital project for $10 million and you borrowed $6 million to do it because you used a $5 million capital reserve, you'd get, or, excuse me, use $5 million capital reserve and you borrow $5 million, you'd get eight into $5 million. But now with the new projects, because they want to promote these capital projects, you're going to get eight into full $10 million, even if you only borrow five. So you will get eight on your own money. Do you remember what I just said? So then when you get the payback and the aid, you will be getting some of your own money back. Okay? And then there's other ways that we could use this capital reserve. It also helps us so that it is the first money spent in the capital project. So it delays your borrowing, which delays your issuance cost, which delays your interest, right? So there's ways to do this and I've had a pretty good history with this. I've done about $500 million worth of capital projects in the last 10 years. So the other thing too, is a capital reserve has the propensity, if properly done, to actually help us try to move toward a capital project that has little or no tax impact. Does everyone understand that? So the principal in interest payments would almost equal the state aid. And I think that's the desirable situation most taxpayers and boards would like to be in. Get the work done without hitting taxpayers anymore. Okay? In other words, let your money work for you. Similar in buses, it's not quite as dramatic in buses, but capital reserve for buses is important because you're not going to borrow the money, there's no issuance cost, there's no interest fees and so on, and you just get pure aid on the purchase of the bus. The appropriate amounts and the appropriate places for the appropriate reasons in conjunction with the district's external auditor. So, in other words, do we have the right amount in each one of the reserves? Should we be altering those? And I will come up with a plan on if they should be altered, when they should be altered, how they should be altered, and so on. And that should be done annually. All right? So you should actually dedicate some board meetings to the analysis of your reserves. And after I'm done with my analysis, I'll show you how to do it and then you can do that annually. And then fund balance to use to offset taxes, to offset expenses, and affect over time. The dilemma is, is that fund balance, you're supposed to have cash reserves of a minimum, I would probably, a minimum 4%. It's under real property tax law 1318. The problem is, you're the only municipality or local government basically that has this requirement maximum. In other words, towns don't have it, villages don't have it, the county doesn't have it. And I got to tell you, let me just characterize it as a word using, the word stupid. Because what happens is it really has nothing to do with your operations. It used to be 2%, it went to 3%, now it's 4%. It's a number somebody invented. If it had real meaning, it would be great. But the truth of it is, there's times in a district needs five and then other times it needs three. And the truth of it is, you can't fluctuate it because then somebody comes and writes you up, works in an office somewhere. Okay, then, you've got the debt service issues for the capital buses. So what we're going to do is take a look at your operational goals. Now, you just have basically, you've got a building, new study going on by Sam Chevett and Paul Saversky and so on, highly recommended, great people, a transportation study because it affects it, and you also have a financial advisor who deals with your bonding and borrowing under SEC regulations, fiscal advisors, and marketing. So I've worked with all of those folks a million times, it seems. So certainly, we can all stay in sync when we take a look at your operational goals, really is what use of your buildings. Then what we want to take a look at is whatever they come up with, we want to leverage that against your capital with the caveats. And there's caveats here because there's certain limits on ways capital projects have to be done in terms of amount of aid and what's aidable and what's not. And we also want to make sure we handle the money properly because you have Ray Wager, your external auditors, which are excellent, Tom Zuber, the representative there, and you've got a legal team up, Ben Farrow's team, which has been my bond counsel, or my counsel off and on during my career, as well as Tim McGill, who's probably one of the best bond counsels in the state. So I know all those people and I've worked with them for years. We also want to take a look at the effect of capital expenditures on the budget and tax cap calculations. Because any portion not covered by aid is really an exclusion onto the tax cap. We want to try and minimize any negative impact on your tax cap. And when I mean negative impact, it would be any increase in taxes if we can avoid it. The long-range plans for the timing and the need for the capital expenditures based on district educational and financial needs and commitments. There's a good time and not a good time to do capital projects. There's actually a good time to start them and there's a good time to finish them. Okay? There's bad times to start them. For instance, we want a plan where we're going to bid in the winter. I can't believe you, how many districts call me? I'm saying, geez, Rick, we already got promised, can you come down and look at our capital project? We've been planning it for years, now we got our bids in and the bids are too high, we can't do it. When did you bid? Well, we just bid. I said, it's June. Didn't you know you were going to bid in June? Didn't you? Well, nobody thought anything of it. Well, too late, you're calling me too late. So I can help you with decisions from now on. You see what I'm getting at? So what you do is you've got to kind of plan it backwards from when do you want to start it? And the bid's got to be way ahead of that time and you want it as cold as possible and you want it as cold as possible outside when the bids are open. That's basically the rule. Calculations, surpluses, revenues, and expenditures. Here, what we're going to do is, we're going to determine the rate and degree of your district surpluses. What's too high, what's too low, what's just right. We're going to try a little Goldilocks experiment. And the purpose and misuse of surplus funds in general. For instance, if you are getting a surplus fund that is serendipitous, shall we say, unaware, that came up, the idea is not to squander these things by spending on recurring expenses. Surpluses, by and large, should probably be spent on one-time expenses. Because the problem is, they cannot, the expense cannot be sustained unless the surplus constantly arrives. So we're going to go through a couple of lessons on that. The use of district surpluses in the long-range plan. In other words, we will actually, we could actually do, we'll see how it works out. A couple scenarios for you, and I can make the place broken about five years for sure. Okay? I'll show you how you can do it. And if you want, I'd be able to do it. But I'll also show you a plan how to stay solvent for about five years. So the ball will be in your court. So you'll know everything, okay? And the relationship between surpluses and reserves, which I've already kind of touched on. So I think what we're going to do is, we've got to talk about the role of the Board of Education, the pre and post study. So I guess the pre, we're kind of, already kind of in the pre-stages here. We're getting ready, this is a lot of data I'm looking at, a lot of questions I've got. I feel sorry for both your superintendent and business official because I am like the Spanish Inquisition. I ask a ton of questions, I ask for a ton of data. I've already been on the phone, what, six, seven times this week with your treasurer, asking for specific information and analysis. So I'm trying to leave no stone unturned as best I can with the time we have. But when we're done with the study, you will be, it's time for full disclosure. You are the board, you have fiduciary responsibility over the district. You've got to know where basically things are going, where they're heading, and we should be able to answer any question for you as honestly as possible. We also got to talk about the role of Central Office, what they're supposed to be doing based on my recommendations. Right now, I think what we're finding out is, is that we're, I'm trying to basically draw some lessons here on how to use data so that if I'm hit by a fast-moving truck when the study's over, you can continue looking at these things, and you'll have been educated and ready to go. Because a good superintendent always leaves a legacy of people to follow, right? So, research with regard to district educational, fiscal, and operational goals. Again, one of the things we have to do when you do your larger study with Paul Saversky and Sam Chevett and his team, is where's the district heading educationally? Because that should help determine where you're going to spend some of your money. Whether it's capital projects, or staff, or program, or whatever. So you've got to really figure that out. Otherwise, all you are is just, you know, a bunch of buildings because we forgot the kids. And we can't forget the kids. And we also have to take a look at where you want to be fiscalized, where you want taxes to be, where you want to be, and so on, in terms of operational goals. In other words, the building, integrity of the building. Communications and long-range fiscal plan to stakeholders. Once we go through the plan, your next task will be, how do you get it out to the community so people know what you've learned, what you're doing, and where you're going? And we'll talk a little bit about that. And then I'm going to talk about, with your Central Office team and with you about monitoring and adjusting mechanisms for the long-range plan, how you can periodically check on things to make sure you're on the right track. How was the underfrogging, y'all denied? Any questions?
What was that?
Sorry, I took a trip to Germany yesterday. I was still practicing. It's last year. Do you have a question?
You have to pay attention.
I didn't understand that last sentence at all.
Oh, I just said German, do you have a question? Yes or no? Any question? I know you have a busy schedule, I'm sorry if I ran through it, but I think I'm trying to give you the overview. You've got a busy night.
It was a great OP.
Yeah.
I think we're ready.
Can we get a copy of this?
It's outdated.
Okay, no sweat, all right. Well, here's the thing. So I'll be in constant contact, we're working, we've got some time set up for next week. We're going to be discussing, Greg's working on some data for me. Basically, I ask for homework in sections, right? Do this, do this, do this, send it to me. Then I ask questions, why this, why that, why this, why that. Now, next, here's what I want you to do next. Do this, do this, do this, do this. So you know what I mean? Kind of like a path, follow a little path. This way here, I'm leaving breadcrumbs. So that when, you know, like I said, when I'm done, then Central Office knows where I've been, what I've done, how I've analyzed things, and you will also have all the clues necessary to keep the place going.
Greg's a little close to retirement. Is this going to push you out the door?
No, no. I'm glad to have Rick to work with, he's fantastic.
Well, thank you.
Actually, he sounded like you to begin with. And overestimate the revenues and underestimate the.
Yeah, see, the thing is, is a lot of people think they have to be right on. Or if you're, if you're like, if you overexpend, you're, it's okay a little bit. And if you don't get as many revenues, it's okay. But what actually happens is, you eat your future. You eat your future. And the key thing is, everything, you know, the ancient, I'm an ex-social studies teacher, right? Everything in moderation, nothing in excess. The ancient Greeks were right, Plato, oh, they're right. The thing is, is there's something wrong with having too much money. There's something wrong with having too little money. That's why I call it Goldilocks. You've got to have just the right amount. First of all, what it does is, you get faith from the community that you're doing the right thing, that you're trying to cover all the bases, all the events and budgets in case things go wrong. But at the same time, we are spending other people's money, we have to be sensitive to it. We've got to make sure that they believe that we're doing the best job possible. But remember, you're building, for instance, right now, you're building a budget. I worked with Greg, we're building a budget. That budget won't even begin, the first penny won't be spent until July 1. You don't even know a major portion of your revenues until April 1. You see what I'm getting at? So it's not a perfect science, but there's some rules along the way that help you out. They help you get it to where you want it to be. It's all about faith and integrity, I think is what it's about. Okay, any questions?
Are you currently working with another district?
Yeah, it's funny because when your superintendent asked me to work with him, I first told him, no, I couldn't because I'm working, I just got through it longer. I am working with 15 districts right now that I didn't want to work with this year because I'm so busy, because I actually run an organization of 433 schools. I'm the executive director of the statewide school finance consortium. So I am the greatest repository in the state of New York of state aid analysis for school districts, all 674 that get state aid. So what happens, though, everybody calls up, hey, Rick, you know, could you do this? Hey, Rick, could you do that? So what happens is, you know, knew Greg, I knew the district, Mathis is very convincing. You know, once I released my grandchildren, we were okay, so the situation was confused pretty quickly. So I hopped in. But also, just to let you know, you know, we have district superintendents calling me, your district superintendent also helped push the button on me. I'm working with a number of districts in this region and across the state. Last night, I was in Niagara County.
I take it you have a team?
Yeah, I do, I have a small team. But you might be surprised, pretty quick study. My dissertation was accepted at Syracuse University, 555 pages, without revision, first in the School of Education, and I graduated first in my class. I'll do all right.
How often do you get to testify to the assembly or the.
I never do.
They never invite you?
Well, they never do because they don't want to hear what I have to say, that's number one. And number two, I find it completely be a waste of time, I'll tell you why. Because the better people that would testify would be you people. Because you're their constituents. Otherwise, you know, I'm looking like I'm the, just the guy with the numbers. But I've analyzed, I actually have all your state data analyzed already. So we're all set.
I wish we talked to you three years ago, started that.
Actually, actually, as I'm finding things out now, I wish you had too. But, you know, but I was working with, you know, 15 more or less, you know. Every year, I pick up usually somewhere around 15, 20, 25 districts to work with. But considering I have a lot of the state's data, because the state shares the data with me. It's nice to know people. And so I'd be able to get a lot of information that quick.
I love what you said about in case I get hit by a bus or whatever. Because I go home from my job, and I always say to somebody, in case I get hit by the train, I'm waiting for it, bro, this is where this is, and this is where this is. So I love how.
My dad used to always say, in case I'm hit by a fast-moving truck.
I love how you're going to leave it for us to go.
Yeah, that's the whole idea, you know, you can keep these things proprietary. I just don't find it appropriate. I mean, I could, but it just doesn't seem right to me. You know, you're supposed to, every place you go, you should leave a mark, and a lasting legacy, so you can live on. But you're all supposed to do good work, so you can live on in a pleasant way.
Ready for this, Greg?
I am, he is ready. And believe me, he's been working hard, we've been really been in his ear.
Good.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Temps, we appreciate it.
And where do you have to go now?
I'm heading back to the Utica area. If I can stay out of the snow, it'll be good.
The further you head south, the better it is.
Well, that's what I'm going to do. I just told Greg, I came the North Road here, was bad news. So I'm actually heading straight down. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, great presentation.
Oh, thanks.
All right. Okay, board, so we're going to shift gears now.
I did, thank you.
So, board, we want to shift gears a little bit now and just kind of give the board and the community a little report. One of the things that came up recently in our budget surveys is that the community really wants to make sure that we keep our eyes and ears on security, especially as we move forward in this budget process, basically. And so one of the things I wanted to share is just to give a general overview of our current security structure that we have here in place in the district. Now, tonight, I've invited a couple folks. First, I invited Bob Fusca, who is our new director, or, excuse me, our superintendent grounds, and he handles, he's the new Bob Miller, basically. He's the guy who's in charge of all of our facilities and all of our staff. And he's been here with us now for just a couple months. And he's getting to know his staff, and why don't you say hi?
Sure, sure. First of all, I want to say what a great district this is. I come from 17 and a half years at Palma, and wow, what a difference here. And introduce myself to everyone.
We take that as quite a compliment.
So this is Bob. And then we have Barry, who is with us. Barry is our director of security, and he is the person who's in charge of making sure that our schools continue to stay safe with regard to security each and every day. You want to say hi, Barry?
Good evening, it's nice to be here, it's nice to be here under this situation.
And we have Barb with us, who is our director of technology, instructional technology. And she's a busy, busy lady, doing quite a bit, not only dealing with our day-to-day operations around instructional technology, but also helping us with the technology portion of our security plan as well.
Hi, folks, thanks for having us speak on this topic.
So we just want to kind of share with the board, just so you know what we're doing and how we're doing it each and every day with regard to security. So we'll start first with just looking at our day-to-day operations. Before we get into the operations, let me back up. We have some folks who are in place to assist us. So we have Barb and Barry, as well as Bob, who's helping us out with regard, and our school building administrators, who all really help us with the security from day-to-day in our schools. Aside from that, we have a safety committee. Bob Fusca is the co-chair of that, one of our assistant principals. Chris Schaefer also co-chairs that. And then we have staff also on that team, a number of staff from across the district who help us around safety across the district. These folks make up our safety committee. And then, if we want to go ahead to the, in terms of day-to-day operations, we're just going to share some of the things that we have in place and things that we're continuing to work on. So first, in terms of our day-to-day operations, if I take the wrong slide, please tell me, Mathis, that's my slide, is that okay?
Yeah, whatever one you like.
Okay, this one is mine, is this correct? This one I did, or is this?
If you'd like me to run with it, I would.
I don't want to take their slide, that's all. So anyway, so in terms of our day-to-day operation, a couple of things that we have in place. We have the main entrances and doors, which are monitored. All of the entrances and doors are monitored with the help of our secretaries. We have ID badges and systems that are in place for our staff and visitors as well throughout each of our buildings. We monitor all of our phone calls. We do have, in each of our buildings, a computer system that really tracks calls in case there's any concerns around security. We do random building sweeps. Those sweeps are done by staff, as well as our administrative team, just to make sure that things are safe throughout the hallways and our different doors. We have ongoing consultation with local and state police. Security camera monitoring, where we have cameras all throughout our buildings. And we continue to add cameras as we move forward. And then we have security cameras on buses as well to help us. We are, all of our buses don't have the cameras, but most do. And as we continue to purchase new buses, we're putting more and more cameras on those buses. We also have a hotline and an email tip line for students that they can use and staff to report any safety concerns, which is also posted to our website. And then we have alarms on all of our buildings as well.
For events, we have an administrative presence at all of our events. We have chaperones at each, and at times, we have professional security details as well with sheriff and area municipal police.
Aside from this, we have at each of our events, we have chaperones who are in place. They are not security guards, but they are folks just to help us out with chaperoning each of our events, basically.
In terms of online security, we have ongoing password assignments. So we have for each of our data systems, we have credentials that everyone with specific permissions logs into. And that password is at a high level of password protection, and it changes every 60 days. We have online monitoring, meaning we watch for traffic, we watch for unusual traffic. We have firewalls in place to prevent hackers. BOCs, through services with BOCs, we can solicit their help with forensic work if we need that done. We also have ongoing consultation with local police.
And then we also have preventative structures in place. And so one of the things that we have is our school safety committee. That committee helps us to continue to keep our eyes on what's happening in terms of securing our buildings. And then that committee also goes out, if I remember correctly, when we do our drills, like our lock-in lockdown drills, and they are there to help to survey and also provide feedback on what's working from what isn't working. We have ongoing consultation with the sheriff's department and with the Wayne County Emergency Management Coordinator. So Barry, if you want to just talk a little bit about some of the things that you've done in terms of reaching out to those folks in the.
Fortunately, I guess as a result of two things. Number one, my background prior to my employment, coming to the Wayne Central School, as well as another job which I currently hold in the town of Williamson. It does put me in regular contact with law enforcement. By having that regular contact, I am able to stay up with a lot of information that otherwise, quite frankly, I would not be privy to. That information oftentimes involves our students in as far as their home environments. And of course, those things are very crucial to us to know quite often as far as how it's going to affect them and the learning environment, as well as the dynamics in school, as far as if we are going to look at the possibility of any conflict or anything of that nature between students. Also gives us a little bit of insight as far as what happened to that student before they came to school that morning. As we all know, that, you know, there can be a lot of different dynamics that come into play in a student's life, and unfortunately, they oftentimes do do affect what happens during the course of the day.
So, you know, again, because of Barry's background, we have kind of really an edge that many others don't, because he's a judge, because he's connected with many of the police officers. He's able to reach out and consult whenever necessary. We also have emergency and natural disaster and acts of violence reference manuals that we provide for our staff to make sure that they have procedures written down and in front of them that they can reference whenever necessary. We do practice and emergency response drills. We do the whole lock-in, lock-out, all of the types of drills that you might need, we do those throughout the year. And then we do background checks on our volunteers and staff members. Want to talk a little bit about the volunteer background checks, basically?
Yeah, the, as you know, you're the end recipient of the names that come through. And fortunately, we haven't had any names to speak of that came through that I had to flag prior to them arriving on your desk. Essentially, you do check into the background of the applicant. And after the application is forwarded to me by the individual buildings, I prepare those, try to get them to HR in a timely manner, so they're all ready for you folks to review before you come to the meeting. And our volunteers, when they do come to the building, of course, they have to sign in, provide identification, and then they're furnished with an ID card and a lanyard. The lanyard also spells out their status, if they're a volunteer, if they're a guest, what their status is, as well as a uniquely numbered ID card that they wear when they are in the building. So if it's a small child, for instance, and they're also color-coded. If it's a small child, he's not necessarily going to remember, you know, a lot of the language on there. But if they remember that, you know, the number six, you know, was on the card. We can look up and see who was number six that day. And it's a very large, bold number that's on each one of those cards.
What database do you use, Barry?
I'm sorry?
What database do you use for the background?
It's a combination of a county and a state by database that I use.
Is that something the district pays for, or is that just something that's accessible through? You access it because of who you are?
Well, no, criminal history information is protected information, there's no getting around that. However, when it does come to sex offenders, there are some sites that are a little bit more unique than the federal site. Quite often, people will reference some of the federal databases for a listing of sex offenders, for instance. Unfortunately, those databases usually include the level two and level three sex offenders. They don't usually have the ones. My prior employment, that was, one of my duties was to oversee and monitor our sex offenders in that jurisdiction. And so this was kind of a little bit of a natural transition for me to be able to also use the same database, so I can get the level ones as well.
So that's primarily what you're looking for? You're not really looking to see if somebody had a DWI five years ago, or a misdemeanor, or, you know, shoplifting, or you're just looking for harmful to children?
Yes, yeah, because any of the other information is going to be privileged.
That's what I wanted to say, background checks.
Yeah, no, nobody, without a series of waivers and fingerprint identification cards being completed, nobody's going to be able to have access to that information.
Thank you.
We also, as a preventative structure, make sure that all staff are fingerprinted as required by law, before they're hired and able to work with our kids. And then, we also provide, as a preventative service, counseling services for our students. We know that some of our students, like all districts, come with different needs, counseling needs, and we provide that and make sure that our kids' needs are met with regard to counseling. Now, some of the things that we are looking at, and future considerations that we're thinking of, especially as we're doing the budget now, a couple of things, the first is the Rapid Responders Program. This is a really unique program that's now out and working with many of our different districts. What Rapid Responders does, is they actually, first of all, create a depository of information around the school district, which includes floor plans, you know, security protocols. They learn different things about your schools, so that if an emergency does come up, you'll have a database of information that's easily accessible to the local police, so they'll know how to respond in a much faster way, to meet the needs of the students and the buildings. They're very well-connected with the local police, and they are working in collaboration, basically. So we want to definitely think about that program, because if something were to happen or go wrong, you want to be able to respond quickly. And the worst thing you want to do is have people calling and saying, you know, where's this part of your building, and who's in that door, and which door is the outdoor, this one. You want to be able to respond as quickly as possible. So this program does allow that. Many in our BOCs are already using this program, or in the process of doing that. The second is the Emergency School Template. There is a new template that the state has put out. What they're asking schools to do is have similar language for lock-in, lock-out drills. They want to make sure that there's consistency across districts, and that everyone understands the same language. And so, one of the things we're working on is that whole Emergency School Template. This is a piece that soon will be required by the state, it is already, many districts are already working on the template. The goal is to make sure, again, that every school district in the state is using the same language. Sometimes, when they would go to one school, they'd say lock-in, and lock-in meant something different in Wayne than it meant in Pelmac or in any other district. So we want to make sure we have the same language, so that's another piece that we're working on. Raptor. Raptor is an instant information system, and what it does is, it basically goes into a database, as Barry was talking about. It finds information, background information, particularly the sex offender information. And it, what happens is, you actually go into a building, and you give your ID, your license is required, and you scan it through a machine, and it does a quick check. And the person who's at the desk can see if something pops up, and if it does, then that person would not be able to access the school in any way. So many districts are using systems, either Rapid or other systems that are just like it. I think there's a couple of different programs out there now, I think we were talking about, if I remember correctly.
There are, there's probably three or four, but they all, you know, very similar visitor badge system. So when you go in, you give your license, and it prints out a picture of that license, so that the sticker that you're putting on for the day has that picture on it.
Right. And this isn't, this isn't like a hundred percent perfect system, you know, it doesn't find everything, but it's a layer that isn't there, and it just provides another layer of safety and security. So, you know, people, many districts will say, well, does it give me every single thing, you know? No, it doesn't, we know it doesn't, but it gives you access to information that you probably didn't have before. This time, for everyone who comes into your building that's a visitor, right? So we do our own check on volunteers. This now works for the entire population that comes in to visit. Do you want to add to that as well?
I guess, just to touch base on the cameras.
Sure.
We are in a process of slowly migrating over to an IP-based system. The system we currently have for our cameras is an analog system, and I guess the best way that I found to describe this is if you were to look at your VHS tapes compared to Blu-ray. There's definitely a significant difference between the two. And as we continue to migrate over to IP, it's going to give us the ability, if the district decides they want to go that way, to allow law enforcement, for instance, to access our camera system, whether it be from a command post, or whether it be from a patrol car at 2:00 in the morning, when there would be an alarm activation in the building. But we need to, we need to get to that place, though, before we can do that. Of course, we'll, there's certainly going to have to be some policies and some safeguards in place before we give anybody access to that, but we're working in that direction.
And speaking of cameras, one of the things that we're working on is, we do have a camera replacement plan and camera addition plan. It's a five-year plan, if I remember correctly. So this year, in our budget for this current school year, there are about 60 cameras in that piece. Last year, we had 10 cameras, if I remember correctly, and each year, there is an increment of cameras, so that is included in the budget, so that we can have more eyes, or at least recording of what is happening throughout the day in each of our buildings, basically. And then, one of the future considerations that we'll look at is strengthening our policies around sex offenders. We have some work that we'll need to work on with our community committee. And then, we need to think about, you know, our staffing. We'll come back to you with thoughts around staffing, do we need additional, or, you know, how do we use our staff, or ways that we can use them more efficiently and effectively, to make sure that we continue to keep our kids safe. So these are just, again, we want to provide an overview of what we're doing, so the community knows there's quite a bit that happens. And then, future things that we want to think about as we go through the budget cycle. Please know that we are also going to be communicating, we are communicating with the community around this. So these documents that you saw tonight will be up on our website, we'll make sure that the entire community can see these. And then we also, we put into newsletters, we've done this in the past, and we'll do it again this year, we have, I thought I brought it with me, but we have a newsletter article that we put into the newsletter that talks about security, and we'll also do a piece on that, especially since this was the number one thing on the community's mind as we go forward with the budget. Any questions for any of these wonderful people who took time off tonight to come and be with us tonight? Any questions at all?
Barry, do you know when we have night activities in the buildings, do the patrol vehicles get a schedule of when we have night activities going on?
I'd have to check with the athletic director to find out if they actually receive a copy of that, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not thinking just athletics, but other events too, like musicals or plays, things of that nature?
When certain events take place that we anticipate, you know, there could be an issue with excess crowds or so forth, I'll frequently give the 911 operator a phone call, I have to put it on the bulletin board down there.
Okay.
That we have that. You know, law enforcement, by virtue of the nature of the beast, you know, some nights you'll find somebody will be available to come by, some nights, you know, you have to make an appointment.
Yeah, yeah.
And stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Barry, you're based here in the high school, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, how often do you have to go to the cameras? Like, if somebody brings you a concern, a theft or this or that?
Every day.
Every day you go on?
Yes. It can be anything from, to check, we've had, everything from checking medical issues, to see what precipitated a medical issue that came upon a student, to bullying issues, to issues where we can't locate a student, we want to find out if they left the property or not, because of course, we're responsible for them. And certainly, there's a security aspect of that, excuse me, as relates to, you know, who may have committed a larceny, or done some damage to some property, or something of that nature. Yeah, but it is every day.
Bob, I'd just like to welcome you to the district, and you having much trouble moving the snow this year?
Not this year. I got a gift on that one.
Yeah, that's for sure.
But, like I said, it's been, it's been great so far. Can't say enough about the people, and staff, and students, and everybody. Great place to be.
We think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much, thanks for coming. Okay, shrink a little bit here. Thanks again. Okay, so, we'll go down to presentation number three for tonight, and that is the program portion of the budget we want to share with you tonight, and kind of give feedback to you all tonight before. So, as we are thinking about the budget, there's a couple of things that are happening right now, just a couple of things. First, the current fiscal climate that we are in with regard to New York State. As you all are aware, under the New York State tax cap, localities and school districts, we can raise annual property tax levies by 2% or by inflation rates, whichever is lower. And because the inflation rate is so low, the state schools are looking at a tax levy growth this year, 2016, of just 0.12%. Want to share a little bit about that, Greg?
Um, no, it's, you know, that's, the unfortunate thing is, when the tax cap, and I stated this before, first came to be, it kind of picked up the name of the 2% tax cap. And so everybody expects taxes to be around 2%. If you remember last year's budget process, going through that formula, Wayne Central could have actually raised our taxes 4.1, I think it was 9%, and stayed within the 2% cap formula. We chose to go 3.68%, but, you know, with the CPI being so low, you know, it really handicaps our ability to help use the taxes to fund some of the expenditures in the school district. And as you know, taxes and state aid tend to be two of our larger revenues, so, then you have to rely more on the state, and there's a lot of unknowns with, you know, and there's the whole political process that gets involved, so, you know, we've always felt that the levy gave us better local control. You know, I remember other boards saying, we had a board member one time said, I wish we didn't get any state aid, because then you put your future in somebody else's hands. So, you know, but it is a formula that's in the law, and we comply with it, but, you know, we spend a lot of time explaining to people, 2%, that's one step of an eight-step formula, so it just kind of gives the wrong connotation, and we try to explain to people so they understand going forward, but it is very low, so it's a little bit concerning.
So what is the real number this year?
So far, I got over my folder, I think we're able to go up a little under $300,000, based on that. Part of that's money that we didn't use last year, and then part of it is assessment growth is another step in there, but even our assessment growth has slowed, that's less than 1% also. So it's a combination of a few different things, Matt, but, you know, it just really kind of handcuffs the revenue.
Yeah, but you've got, you've got this formula of what is included, what isn't included, so I was wondering what that real number was after.
Well, it takes into consideration that you add the pilots in, you take the pilots out, and as Mr. Tim said, if there's any part of your debt service that's not covered by state aid, that local tax share, they allow you to add that in as an exception, because you have to be able to raise that. And, you know, those numbers for us are all, right now, very low.
So, given the state of the fiscal climate, you know, when we're talking across the entire state, at only being able to raise taxes by 0.12%, keeping in mind, like, our health costs for next year are much more than that, we are working very carefully to try to really craft a budget that can, to the greatest extent possible, stay within the tax cap or freeze, is what many of us are calling it, for the next school year. So as we move along, we want to just keep that in mind here today. In terms of program portion of the budget, what we're thinking about at this time is really a proposed budget in this area with an increase of 3.77% this year. Really, a lot of those, that, a lot of that increase is really around the needs of our kids, and we'll talk a little through some of that here. Some of our highlights is that, in terms of our teaching, we have a normal increase, as everybody does, for teacher salaries. Every year, we have to pay the staff what their contracts say that they're due, so we do have an increase this year for our teachers. In terms of our programs, one of the things that you'll see as we go through tonight is that there are some increases, again, in our special education cost for salaries, as well as for our kids. We have a number of kids who are going to need to attend special programs. We have a lot of our students who stay in district, but we have about 11 or 12 who will need to be in specified BOCs programs that really will meet their unique needs. In terms of occupational education, there is an increase with BOCs teaching salaries that we need to really keep before us, which is a part of that 3%. And then, there is an increase in students, a very small increase, a couple students more than we had this year who are going to BOCs. I think our number is around 50.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight kids total who are going to BOCs to, for occupational educational services. In terms of computer-assisted instruction, we have some increases in BOCs cost, which are not costs that we control, but BOCs services are saying, hey, our costs are increasing just a little bit, so that is included in here. We've also included this year, for the next school year, we want to use some of the Smart Schools money that we have been allocated. We're going to be coming back to give a Smart Schools presentation very soon to the board, but we want to be able to access some of those funds. Now, keep in mind that the Smart Schools piece is a piece where you have to spend it first, once you spend it, you get it reimbursed. I think reimbursement turnaround time, they're thinking is about, how many months?
They said between 30 and 60 days, so it's not like traditional BOCs where you spend it one year, you get it the next year. And this was that SMART bond act that they passed, I think, two years ago?
Yes.
And Barb helped me, Wayne's allocation is 1.4. So you're going to see a corresponding, when we show you how much the expenditure is in the next year's proposed budget, once we present the revenues, you'll see a corresponding revenue to offset that dollar for dollar.
In terms of transportation costs, there will be a decrease, and really, the decrease is due to our fuel cost, which have gone down, which is, which is good, so we're projecting a lower cost with that. And then we have employee benefits. There is a 4.4% increase in health insurance cost. We have a contribution rate this year of 15.7%. This upcoming year, our current year, we're about 18%.
Yes.
So there's a decrease in the ERS. The TRS, also, we see a small decrease. It's gone from about 13% for the next school year up to about, it's at 11.72%. So there'll be some decreases in ERS, TRS, but there are increases in health insurance. And then, we are looking at an increase in workers' compensation costs as well. All right, so, we're going to go down, and you should have a copy of this in your work package, these are small to see on the screen, in your board packet. If you didn't have one, we'll give you one right now, we have extra copies here.
Grant, I have a question.
Yes.
For, um...
I want my Chromebook.
The 4.4% increase in the health insurance.
Yes.
Now, we go with Excels. They go from January to December, their rates, correct?
No.
They don't?
No, for our plan, they go July 1 to June 30.
Okay, so for the private sector?
There are some school districts, Carla, that, Excels' rates normally run on a calendar year.
Right.
And there are some Monroe County schools that follow a calendar year, just like Excels does. In our flash consortium, which is the Free Lakes Area Schools, we've always followed the July 1 to June 30.
Okay, so if they're going to give us a raise, then we build it into the, because we already know what it's going to be.
Correct.
It's not like come January of '17, they're going to raise their rate, so then we have to figure that out.
That's correct.
Okay, because I know the private sector is January to December.
Right, right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll go down each page of this portion, so we'll start on page four.
And, you know, I try not to read every line to the board, I, you know, just like with the highlights, I just try to capture the, you know, the things that are going up and bring certain things to your attention. Actually, if we go to page eight, because most of the 2110, which is regular teaching program, there's not, you know, besides the contractual increase for, for the WTA staff, there's, you know, the building budgets are set based on enrollment, enrollment's been down, so the building budgets are pretty much flat. You know, the codes might change a little bit, as the buildings work through the process of allocating their building budgets with their leadership team. But as Dr. Kelvin said, if you go to the 2250 section of the budget, which is the special ed piece, on page eight, and if you go down to line 2250, 490, sit down to the, almost to the bottom of the page, says BOCs Services CSE. So you can see that in 1516, the current budget is $600,000, and the proposed budget for next year is $950,000. So that's quite a sizable increase, but as we've stated to the board during this year, we've had 21 new special ed students come to the district, and actually, three of those students had to be placed in BOCs programs. So, they're currently in the BOCs programs now, but it's not budgeted, so the budget increase for these students, and they all have a tuition next year of almost $93,000, so we've got almost a $300,000 increase in our Wayne-Freely Lakes piece of our BOCs.
That's our total cap, right there.
Correct, correct. We also have a student that's, we do have a few students that go to Monroe BOCs if the Wayne-Freely Lakes BOCs is not the right fit. We have a current student there, who's currently budgeted, but the increase in the program services for that student are next year $51,000.
This, without divulging too much, this is a pretty high needs program for a kid who has very intensive behavioral needs and supports that... a kid who has very intensive behavioral needs and supports that need to be in place for the child, so.
Right.
A lot of the cost that you'll see in terms of the increase for the student is really for related services, so counseling and speech and OT, and those are the things that also need to be covered for that child.
So the, the Monroe component of our special ed costs, Monroe BOSI's piece, is gonna be up 122,000, because we also have another student who's starting a program next year who's, um, not budgeted currently, and that program would be 65,000. So in other words, I think some initial questions and it wasn't fairly, you know, when you see a line like that going up that much, you guys should be asking the question, but, you know, Mrs. Schreick was here today working with, um, Dr. Calvin and I to make sure we had the information so we'd be able to, uh, to share.
Now, any, um, money that comes back to us from state aid on that, that comes next year?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't see that, 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 that actually comes as the revenue piece from the state?
Right, right. And then you don't get the full amount back?
No, I know you only get a percentage of your piece of break.
Yeah, but you do get some help there.
I just wasn't sure when it actually came, but it's the following year.
Right, and you, and you get, you get money back, but it's, first you have to spend a certain amount up to our threshold, and I think our threshold is around 30,000. So once you hit that number, whatever that number is, then you get reimbursed a percentage of, of that.
Above and beyond.
Above and beyond.
So how is that threshold number determined? It sounds like it's not the same number everybody...
Not the same number every year. The state determines it using their formula, uh, and then they give it out to you at the, usually it's at the end of the year or beginning of the school year, they'll send out, this is your threshold for your district to every district. You can, um, always complain or ask for that threshold to be looked at. Usually, um, it's not changed, but the number does change sometimes from year to year.
Does district wealth? You, uh, use the fact that you have so many special ed students, can you petition for some kind of adjustment that way?
Yeah, you can, you can always petition.
Highly high.
You can petition, but it usually doesn't get changed. It's the rule basically for every district.
Okay.
You have to spend some, because we have a, an amount of responsibility for every student that comes to the district, there's an amount that we have to pay. Um, you have to do your portion first and then the state will say, okay, we'll aid you on what's above and beyond your portion. So for a normal student who comes to Wayne, you know, the costs are about 13, uh, just under 14,000 this year. A student who has specific disabilities, it might be double that. And the state says, you have to meet your threshold, your responsibility, and then we'll pay you the additional using our formula, so.
Does district wealth fall into that at all as far as...
A number of things, a number of things, uh, look at it, you know, they look at the poverty rate, they look at, um, a number of, of different indicators. Um, they have these, it's one of these formulas that you go, where'd you come up with that? But it's, it's their formula, their number, and some of it's a secret, some of it's not. But, but you get at least the threshold number, you know what that is, and then you can, uh, go from there basically, yeah.
It looks like we did try to cut down our supplies just to offset some of those costs under the net program.
Yes, we did.
We did, we did. But if, if you look at just the pure numbers, the BOSI services alone, it's a 54% increase. And then when you look at special ed budget overall, the entire department is up 10% while they're absorbing that 54. So, you know, I think, like we said before, we've done such a good job that you wonder if your reputation precedes you and, you know, we've had quite a few move, more move-ins this year than I can ever remember and, you know, some pretty...
I think we need some TSAs by a certain period.
Unfortunately, that is what districts who provide good special ed services are seeing, especially with the internet and blogging, people need to know where they can go and it's all right. And special ed is the one variable in a budget that can be like this and can be like this. Do you know, Greg, do these students, seeing these families, seeing, they're not transient, they're not gonna...
So we do, we do have a couple of, um, children who, who, uh, some of their families have come or gone, right? But most of our, most of these students who we've received are really parents who are, you know, when you have kids with disabilities, most parents are very careful about when, where they send their children because they want their needs met. So most, most of these parents are moving, new parents to the district, who are really coming here again because of the good work that they are hearing about Wayne. One of the things that we do is we have consortium districts, uh, who send their kids to us. So rather than send their kids to, uh, expensive program BOSI's, they're sending the kids to us from multiple districts. And so when that reputation is out there, people wanna come to where the good is happening, so.
They get charged for that, right?
Say that again?
Yes.
They get charged for that.
They do.
It actually helps our cost to keep it down, 'cause...
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Helps favor that teacher and that program.
It does. So that's what we have. We have people moving in who really want good work for their kids, basically, and, um, the cost is just bigger.
And we do have two children that used to be our children, moved away and then the family came back. I don't know if it was a year or two later, but, you know, based on past and success and whatnot, so.
Greg, they had, for the, the cost that we get reimbursed for, the above and beyond, a guess of, like, is it 50% reimbursement or is it much less?
It's, it's usually at our, our aided rate, I think we're like 70% for most of our stuff. It's usually at that, that rate, basically, so you get 70% of whatever it is that you put out. And, and just to keep in mind too, there are other things that can be reimbursed, so if there's a lot of transportation and costs, uh, you know, involved, those high costs, um, can, you can get transportation aid and if the child is Medicaid eligible, the district can go after Medicaid, uh, aid as well. Those are all things that we do pursue pretty aggressively to keep costs down.
Um, so moving down to actually page nine, to the 2280 section of the budget, this is the PAC Ed piece and, uh, Superintendent Erby spoke a little bit on the opening comments, um, but if you go down to, once again, the BOSI's line, 2280, 490, it's almost to the bottom of the 2280 section. Our current budget is 536,900 and next year's proposed budget is almost 559,000 and that is a 3.9% tuition increase from BOSI's and then we also have, I think, five to seven more kids next year than we have currently, um, which, uh, can, you know, makes up, um, that increase. But if you remember, we've had a lot of discussions about, you know, we wanna prepare kids for all different things. That might be some's path, cows might be some's, but it's path, so it's along with our, our, you know, where we're trying to go with our district planning. Um, and just the very next section down, 2330, um, we started up a, our summer school again last year. Um, Joe worked with the principals and we provided some transition programs at, uh, elementary level and then going to middle school and then middle school to high school. Um, we're rolling that forward again, there's 24,500 built into next year's proposed budget so that we can offer the, uh, similar program. I know Joe's working with the principals now and what that'll exactly look like, but continuing on with helping those students there.
Greg, I have a question on that. I wish Michelle was here for that because, um, when you did the presentation on the summer school, there were a lot, or maybe Joe did it, I don't know, I can't remember, but there were a lot of children who would've, who, who were enrolled, but then their attendance was very poor. And I know there's only so many slots for summer school, so does that, you know, if you're referred last year and you didn't come about maybe three or four times out of all of it, and they wanna refer you again for summer school, do we look at that and say, hey, you didn't come last year, there's another student that would benefit, that would attend? I mean, I don't know how that's looked at, but that was a big concern of mine last year, that we spent a lot of money on special ed, on summer school, and we had a lot of kids not come.
Right. Well, Michelle's program, to come in the summer for Michelle's, they're in a 12-month program. This is for kids that are, uh, regularly read kids and Joe can probably speak more to, um, the placement and how the selection process works.
You know, our first concern is, you know, are kids reading at grade level, are they doing math at grade level? Last year's program, we're transitioning programs, so we were primarily looking at second to third grade, so it'd be a whole new batch of second to third grade kids. And one of the things we discussed was that sometimes summer school can feel like a life sentence, um, because, you know, so we wanted to give kids a chance, go through the primary years, who are most at risk and are needy kids, let's give them that boost, because we had a district goal that all kids will be reading at grade level by third grade. We did the same thing for fifth to sixth. And then really the high school one is a credit, uh, recovery model and we had, um, 14, I think 14 out of 20 kids recover at least one credit or more, so, so that program's a little different and it was very successful, because you know the statistic on if kids are, just fell one course their freshman year, they're about 50% as likely to graduate on pace with their peers. But these, just a short answer is they'll be different kids, if we stick with the same model. And I have some preliminary discussions with the principals, they've always got different ideas, so.
My guess would be our cost would be the same regardless of whether we have 20 kids or 24 kids, so that the four marginal kids whose attendance is, there's some benefit to those kids as well and that's not gonna change our cost.
No, yeah, our cost, we're not gonna go 20, it's 24 for the entire program.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we get the most kids in and they get the biggest bang for the buck.
I agree. Okay, so moving on, if we move now to page 10, and the second grouping is 2630, which is, uh, part of our computer, um, assisted, so Barbo oversees two parts of our budget, 1680 falls on the administrative component, that's all the, the closets and the wiring and, and the, the backbone of the network. 2630 is instructional component. And once again, if you look down the BOSI's, you'll see that, um, the first BOSI's line there, we're currently budgeting 377,575, next year's proposed is 483,145, and that doesn't include, I don't know if she's still, doesn't include new services, um, it just can, includes continuing what we're already doing and the fees associated with things we already have and a part of our, um, technology plan for our students. It's the next line down that, um, I've added that separately. It still falls under BOSI's, but that's the Smart Schools money, so you'll see the first, uh, 517,000 dollars budgeted of the 1.4 that we're allocated to, but once again, you'll see a corresponding revenue when we show you the revenues in March that'll offset that dollar for dollar.
And with, with those Smart Schools money, so we'll be looking at technology upgrades for students, wiring in the building to make sure, in the buildings to make sure that they can, that the technology that we purchased, like Chromebooks and iPads, that they can really work like they need to, the wireless, uh, routing as well. And then also security, uh, we talked about cameras and so some of our costs will be coming for those security cameras to make, make sure we have the right ones using that Smart Schools technology money that's there.
Going down to the bottom line of that, the instructional, instructional media, where it's showing we had a million last year of an adjusted budget and we went to 1.5, now 0.5 for this year is for that.
Right, correct.
Now, one other question here that I just noticed, um, expensed and encumbered, that's, expensed is what we spent, encumbrance is what we need to spend.
What we have.
What we have.
Spending and spending.
When I add those two together, I get right around 800,000, yet we have an adjusted budget of 1 million. And I'm just wondering what the difference is there on 26. The 264 and the 532.
So of your adjusted budget, right now, you have an expensed amount, this is how much we've already expended, if I remember.
Right, so, so, right, so Dennis is saying the budget's been adjusted to a new number of a million 14,000 and right now, between what's already spent and what we're planning on spending equals...
800,000 approximately, a little under 800,000.
Right. Um, just, that, that's a good question. Um, part of it Dennis is, I'd, I'd have to ask Barb because going back to the BOSI's line, the adjusted budget is 441 and if you add the, uh, expense to the encumbrance, it's 390. So there might be something coming through, um, when we do services with BOSI's, they give us what's called an SAA, it's a service agreement, so we might've have a new one going through that's gotta be signed off by Mathis and I. Um, and we might've already adjusted the budget for that, but it might not have actually hit the BOSI's expenditures yet.
Just, I mean, just jumped out.
We can find out, but that, that, that's most likely what that is, 'cause we usually don't move the money until we know that, that there's a need there.
No problem.
Um, so moving now to, uh, page 12, uh, I just wanna point out, and if you go to the very bottom of the 2855, 2855 is our inter-scholastic program, and I just wanna point out that the, the current budget is 634,495 and next year's budget is almost dollar for dollar the same, 634,540. So we've really held the line on athletics, Tony's done a great job working with the budget. Um, you know, our teams have been doing good, we heard a lot of the success earlier in the meeting, um, but we've got, you know, a good amount of money set aside for, for our kids there. Um, and then the next area down, transportation, 5510, 571, the gasoline line, um, you can see that, uh, it's towards the bottom of the 5510 grouping. Um, back in 1415, we had a budget of 350, uh, this year our budget's 315 and next year we're proposing it to be 250. I don't believe the fuel costs will stay down as low as they are, but, um, even if, even if we spent, I think, 60 or 70,000 dollars more next year, the 250 should, should keep us in good shape, so.
It actually looks like we've did the, kind of the same thing there, we've spent 51,000, we have 121, so that's 170.
Right. I'm anticipating we're spending about 200,000 out of the 315, so I've lowered it to 250.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we're showing 257.
Prices won't completely hold, but...
We buy our gas off the state contract.
We do.
Are we locked in for an entire year, Greg?
It's actually a formula round.
Okay.
It looks off of a market sheet with a, a certain markup, but it is, it is like a yearly piece.
With gasoline fluctuating the way it is, or diesel, do we ever check the spot market to see if we could buy it cheaper locally or...
Um, I, I'd have to talk to Fred, but I think in the past when we've checked that, you know, the state prices are pretty competitive, because there's a lot of volume that goes to those state contracts.
Yeah, okay.
So, we usually get a pretty good bang for a buck off the state contract.
Just wanna also just point out, so when you're looking at the expenses, keep in mind, the year's not over yet.
Right.
We're only in year of month five.
This is just anticipated.
So I just wanna, as we go through, you know, it looks like, oh my gosh, we're still spending, we're not done yet with the year, we have five months.
Expenses is what's already spent, encumbrances is what you've already...
Is what you're figuring out for.
The invoices are out there.
But you can still have more coming up.
Absolutely, we still got time, yes, I just wanna make sure we're all on that.
But when we set next year's budget, part of the analysis when we're, is looking at this year and the starting point is the budget, but what we're actually gonna spend is a big factor. So if I hadn't looked at what we were gonna spend, I wouldn't have been able to shift it down as much as I did. And I still left, like I said, some protection there for prices do go up a little bit, which I, which I think they probably will. I mean, it's great that there's lows there, but I'm not sure how long that lasts.
That bubble will burst.
Yeah.
You know what surprises me is 20, $20,000 on tires. We, those are big tires and there's a lot of buses and that seems pretty good, because I know what tires cost for my own car. We must get a good deal.
That's the only one we have to replace, Carla, so, you know.
We must have to replace quite a few.
Yeah.
How often does a tire last?
You gotta run the miles you run.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure what the tires are ready for on a big bus like that. I'd have to check with Fred and Doug.
It's been a lot.
Tires, you know, when you're looking at buses, you know, just a, you know, a bulge or something, they're very expensive.
No, I'm saying I'm really...
The LED lights now are ridiculous.
I thought it would be a lot more than that for tires.
So now if we can move to page 13, um, and we'll come to the end of the program, but going down to employees retirement system, 9010, 800, our current budget is 1,197. As we stated in the opening, that rate is going down, I think, 2.5%, so we've been able to lower that budget to 1,010 for next year. But please understand, even at that, we're still budgeting 15.5%. You know, it was probably 10 years ago, we were at 0.8% and then through that whole recession, as the market wasn't performing, because the retirement system gets their money in two ways, from return on investment, which is a huge part of their funding, and then the rates they charge the, the districts. And when they lost out on the, on the investment piece, they had to make up for it with the rate increase. It is starting to come down, but I mean, it, just think of the magnitude of 0.8, up[1767.32] It is starting to come down, but I mean, just think of the magnitude of point eight, up eighteen percent, now we're at fifteen and a half. But it has given us a little bit of relief. And then same thing, the next line down, teachers' retirement, that's going down a little bit. The social security line is, you know, that's tied directly into our salary increases based on our bargaining unit contracts. Workers' comp is slated to go up, that's also tied into the state system as well as the medical industry because there are medical claims there. And then our unemployment costs are actually starting to come down because that extended benefit ended, I think, over a year ago, where they extended it to eighteen months from, I think it was twelve. And health insurance, early on, in the summary, we said it was a four point four percent increase. But last Friday, I'm on the board for our health plan, and that was the proposed increase by Excelis, but the board accepted a four percent increase. So when we come back at the next meeting, you'll see an additional reduction in the health insurance line of point four percent, which I don't know exactly how much that'll save us, I'm assuming about twenty, twenty or thirty thousand dollars. But the rate is going to be a little bit lower because the plan has had a very good year, so.
It also affects the employees' contribution, their contribution too.
Correct. Because of that four percent increase, if they're at an eighty, twenty split, they absorb twenty percent of that, or seventy, thirty, they absorb thirty, depending on what unit they're in and what level they're at.
All right, and just in case there's like people out there that actually look at this, the salary for the pack manager, I don't want anybody to think that we gave him a twenty thousand dollar raise from fourteen, fifteen to fifteen, sixteen, that's his prorated rate because he came halfway through the year, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. And that's really the highlights for the program piece. On behalf of to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Eric Ford?
Okay.
We asked a lot.
One of the things I noticed is that the amount that we're budgeting for textbooks is going down. That's a reflection of enrollment declines.
Correct, correct. So the next step in the process is the first meeting in March. We'll be presenting the administrative piece, which will be the third part of the three-part budget. So by then, you'll have the entire expenditure side. We'll also share with you for the first-time projected revenues. So again, that meeting, you'll have the whole, the whole budget in front of you. Then our calendar allows for the second meeting in March for discussion and, you know, if we have to come back to you with any revisions. And then we're slated to adopt April ten or twelve, whatever the first meeting in April is. So that's our timeline.
It is April the seventh.
April the seventh.
When you, oh, I just have one question. When you put the budget together with the administrators, were there, I mean, everybody else has a lot of wants and needs. Were most of the needs that they absolutely said we need coming in yet?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. Greg did put out information to the, to the principals, gave them time to help create their budgets, basically. And then we go over them to make sure that things are, you know, nothing's out of whack. If something is, we kind of say, are you sure? But honestly, we did not have, we really did not have issues where there were things that were just, you know, things that were out of whack. Everything was really kind of, really what they needed, and everything worked with them. So that, what they've asked for is what's in the budget, basically. And let me just also share that this information, in the, in the spirit of transparency, it, it will be up on our website. The board packet is already on the website, but we will make sure that this is posted there as well so that anyone in the community who wishes to see it, they would be able to see it along with this video, just so that we continue to, to meet that board goal for the year, basically. Okay? Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
I want to thank Greg, by the way. Greg, for those of you who don't know, he's been out for the last three days with.
Bronchitis.
Bronchitis. And he came in this morning in the snow. He wanted to make sure he was here to do the budget presentation, and Bob is out as well. We had a couple people who were sick, so we're just glad that he made it, anyone, to make sure he got this done for the board tonight, basically.
I'm sure he was going to say, we ran away and got married.
No, that's why I had to excuse myself. I had a little coughing spell when Rick was presenting. I didn't want to sit here and kill the four guys, so I stepped on it, sorry.
Just a couple other things, board. Strategic planning, so we will be starting our strategic planning, March first, second, fourteenth and fifteenth. There will be four full days. We have about thirty stakeholders, from the community teachers, community members, parents. We have a board member also on that. Peace Pam is going to be on that with and for us. So we're going to spend four days looking at mission, vision, core beliefs. We'll set some academic targets for the next couple of years, and then we'll look at miscellaneous items like what you heard from this Dr. Timms tonight, basically. So we will spend quite a bit of time doing that, and you're, you're more than welcome to stop over. We will be at Casey Park there, working with us to give us some, some space there, without cost, hopefully, is what we're looking for. So we'll spend some time, over four days, really spending time there. So if you'd like to come, you're more than welcome. The other thing I wanted to mention is Dr. Saversky called me, and I spoke with him late this afternoon. He would, his part is not due to begin until, his study is not due to begin until April. But he'd like to get started a little bit early with just pulling some data together and getting, getting things moving. And he's asked if it's possible to start with the meeting with the board, which is a public, it would be a public meeting, but not a board meeting. And he would, if, if the board is okay, he'd like to come in and just, during that meeting, the public can come. And what he would do is spend time just talking about the study, what he's looking at, and make sure that everybody's really on track. And it's really just a time to make sure that the community, everybody hears it all at the same time. And that would be kind of like what Dr. Timms did tonight, but he, he would like a little more time. He's asked for about an hour to two hours to do that with the board and the community. So he has given me some dates. So I was going to think about.
Email that out.
I can email the dates out, and you all can.
It's going to be hard for me to say without looking at my other calendar.
I can, I can email the dates out. He's giving me some dates for February, the twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-ninth, which are pretty quick coming. And then he's giving me some dates in March, like March third or the eighth or the fourteenth. So I'll send those out tomorrow on the board. If you're, if you can let us know what your thoughts are, we can go from there. And again, he wants to just kind of talk about the study to make sure we're all on the same page and that the community's engaged in the conversation again. So not a board meeting, but a, a meeting, a, a, more like a board workshop, that would be a public workshop, if that's.
Do we have a time?
Dr. Saversky is doing the study on enrollment, he's doing the building space and usage, all of the big chunks, a big part of the, he's from the SES.
Where is it?
Six to eight.
Okay.
Five to seven. He's looking for about a two-hour timeframe, basically. Okay? So I'll send that out, if you can let me know, that would be great, and we can go from there. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that in March, we have Legally Blonde coming up. I hope I said that right. And it should be a really nice play. There's a lot of great actors in it this year, so that's just a hint. If you're looking for something realistic, obviously, we'll have a lot of fun this year. Okay? That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Under board business, the first item is the, to accept the single audit report. That was the report that our external auditor presented to the board at our last meeting. Can I get a motion to accept it? Pam, second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor of accepting? Thank you. Next one is to accept the Gemini Business Course and the name change. We had a presentation at the last board meeting by the high school principal and by Tracy Tomfido. Can I get a motion to, to do those actions? Matt, or Dennis, second. Tim, any discussion? All in favor? Next, I'm glad Greg walked back into the room. Twelve change orders. Can I get a motion to accept the last of the change orders? We hope.
No, that's it.
Really?
That's it, yes.
I'll put the motion.
That is a second. Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor? With this now, Greg, we can, we, the project is finished.
Project is finished.
We can begin to apply for the state aid.
We have, right, we have two final payments to make, one to Walver, one to Connor Haas. We've already started the process of preparing the final project reports. We're working with fiscal advisors, I've sent them a bunch of information. So we're well on schedule to get those in. So we'll get our half-year's worth of aid, and we'll adjust our expenditures on the band to correspond to flow of the aid.
Good.
Not a long road, but.
Yes.
We're there.
When did we start this?
I think in four, I think two, well, the planning of it, yeah, the actual construction in twenty-fourteen.
Can I get a motion to approve for the second reading of Policy six one one zero and Policy five six seven five? The first one being a code of ethics for board members, and the second being student grading information. Dennis, the second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next is the WTA memorandum of agreement. If you remember, when we negotiated with the Teachers Association, we left the question of pay for extracurricular activities to be decided later, and this, this would complete that. Can I get a motion to accept this? Matt, second. Tim, any discussion?
I just have one question. This will, this will be right into their contract and will be, and when the regular contract ends. The part that was negotiated last year.
This will be, what we are doing, what you have is the memorandum of agreement, so that will be an addendum to the contract. And it does end when the life of the contract ends.
Any other question? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is the appointment of Lisa Marino as special education teacher assigned to Benaway High School. It's a part-time appointment at point five, effective September the first, at current rate. Can I get a motion to accept this? Tim, a second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The reason Dennis is abstaining is this is his daughter. Next is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the Delphi Service Agreement? Can I get a motion? Pam, a second. Tim, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Committee reports, communications, Jeremy.
We had a meeting tonight. We have our next community conversation scheduled for February twenty-fifth, six-thirty here in this room. And the topic is going to be testing for two thousand and sixteen. We are keeping our March meeting on the third for five-thirty here. But keep an eye on that one because we may cancel it because we're playing another community conversation farther down the road. But if we don't need to have that meeting, we're going to cancel it.
Audit committee, Matt.
Yeah, we had our meeting in January. We discussed our December internal claims auditor report. We reviewed Policy fifty-five, seventy-two and Audit Committee mission statement. As a reminder, we have professional development with James Marand, and that is April ninth at eight to twelve P.M. That's for all board members. Our February meeting date is canceled. The next meeting is March tenth, and we will review March internal claims auditor report and will receive that. Go over the extra classroom activity fund report, or internal extra classroom activity fund auditors report, which is a separate thing, and look at the single audit, external auditor and internal audit risk assessment. We're looking at RFPs or what else we might do. And for internal audit, we need to pick a target. And that's it.
Policy committee, Dennis.
Policy committee, we were supposed to meet tonight. We did not, due to.
I'll send it to you.
Absentees and conflicts of interest. We will forget the date for the next one, but the agenda will be this past agenda.
Under Board President comments, I have a couple of comments. First, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to extend condolences to the family of Pope Benjamin, whose husband Rod passed away within the past month. Pope was a secretary in a high school for twenty-five years at least. And I'd like to extend condolences to Pope and to her son Brian and her daughter Barbie. And also to the family of Gary Marionetti. Gary was a member of our maintenance staff here at the district, and his mother passed away within the past week. Second thing I would like to say is that recently, trustee Pendleton and I and Dr. Cowan had an opportunity to hear the Rural Schools Executive Director speak. He spent most of his time talking about state aid and the, the lack of reason or, in some cases, expertise that went into state aid. But the one point that he made that I think struck me in particular, and it was, the same point was made by Dr. Timms tonight, that school boards perhaps have a better opportunity to lobby with the state than we realize. The executive director pointed out that the Republican margin in the Senate is very slim. It's only two people. And that normally the, the school aid comes down to three people in a room. And the people who write the aid programs are not always the most knowledgeable about the, about the programs they're writing. So that, in essence, I think what he was telling us is that the Senate is the most vulnerable to lobbying by school boards. And that's particularly maybe true in our case, where we have a senator who is going to retire. It's something for us to think about. The other thing I've noticed, as a member of the New York State School Boards Association, we get a, we have a service called Eclipse, which are newspaper articles from around the state. Increasingly, as I survey that, I'm noticing the number of articles coming out basically complaining about the tax cap and the way the tax cap is written, that in some cases, some schools are actually going to have to reduce their property tax rates because of the way that law is written and how unfair that is to schools. Now, we heard tonight that Greg tells us that under our cap, it looks like we can raise three hundred thousand dollars. That's not much of a revenue increase. So that seems to be an increasing thread throughout the state, is that newspaper articles are starting to appear questioning whether or not the, the cap should include, include a cost of living, since schools really do not traditionally compare to the Consumer Price Index. And then last things, I also had the opportunity to attend the sectional wrestling tournament. I would like to compliment Tony and his staff and the Boosters Club for running the tournament the way it was run. It was an outstanding tournament. It's great that our kids won. It's great that our coach was selected as Coach of the Year by his peers. But certainly, the entire atmosphere of the tournament was a positive for Wayne Central, especially having an eighth grader, this is an athletic event, but we had an eighth grader who demonstrated her musical talents. She sang the National Anthem and just was a very, very nice presentation. And then last, I could not help but notice that the recent reports from the high school, sixty, sixty-six percent of our students made an honor roll, whether it was a merit list, honor roll, or higher honor roll. When we have two-thirds of our student body doing good academic work, it speaks very well for the district. So I would like to compliment our students on their academic success. That's all I have. Can we get a motion for Jeremy? Jeremy, Matt? I don't, I don't think I even need to ask, but by law, I probably have to ask. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, drive carefully.